Tinkley Drive in Elmwood, I recall years back was going to connect to MacMillan. That's why MacMillan had the gate there at the end before you went into the school property. But the last conversation that we had with Elm Salumber, that wasn't going to happen.
Through you, Madam Warden.
You remember that?
They do have an application now to build a biochar plant, which would interfere with any future connection there. That was a plan originally from some time ago, and we actually rooted some infrastructure through there to follow a potential street network. But the plan right now is Elm Salumber doesn't plan to develop that as a street. They plan to build a biochar plant there.
Nothing we could do to expedite that connection?
Other than expropriation, I don't think there are any other options now.
Okay, thank you, Madam Warden, that's all.
Counselor Garden Cole. I'm trying.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a comment on that. I mean Elmwood is a huge subdivision with one exit, as they know, and they've struggled with that for many years. The prospect of having the 4H development happen, as Counselor Mitchell said, it's the last phase of their project where they were going to have the second exit happen. So that is concerning. I'm just, with the weather events that we're having and people getting, you know, stuck in their subdivisions with only one entrance, I definitely can see the concern of residents with the one entrance on that. Thank you.
Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Even before this letter came in, I was going to bring something up that most, information from councilors. I believe this goes beyond Elmwood. Throughout the whole municipality, we have dead-end provincial roads that have multiple houses on them. We have multiple subdivisions throughout every district that are one way in, one way out, with lots of houses. I think the bigger picture is, is we need to have a proper capture of this, especially for our EMO. So in events in certain areas, when they happen, this information's already known and can get out to the first responders and the people that need to respond to these situations and know what they're going into faster. So I guess in response to this, I'll make the motion I was going to make in business from councilors. And I would move that the municipality create a report identifying all single entry, single exit subdivisions over 50 homes, or whatever appropriate number is deemed, to be shared with EMO and explore possible connectivity for second exits from each subdivision. And I imagine that this report's going to take a while to put together, so I'm not looking for it right away. In a perfect world, if we had a 2,000-person staff, I'm pretty sure we could do that with the numbers we have and everything else going on. It's going to take some time. But that's the motion I'm going to do, because I believe it's important that not only our EMO staff have that information, but we have categorized and we have a list of this. So going forward, as things come in, we can be a little more proactive, because this has happened for 40, 50 years, you know? I myself moved into a road that has one way in and one way out. I knew that when I moved there, right? It's a risk I took, and it's a risk, you know, that I have to live with. So I'd just like to see this be captured throughout the whole municipality, because there is quite a few subdivisions out there. And even, like I said, provincial roads that come to a dead end, that have hundreds and hundreds of homes. That's what I move.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Mitchell. I have three councilors who are on to speak prior to the motion. I will allow a three-way. Counselor Eisner.
Thank you, Madam Warden.
Person to answer my question?
Counselor Tingley.
To staff, the second exit that 4H Development is looking at putting in, how long a road is that right now to put that? Like, I'm wondering, I don't know the area that good. What would be the cost to put something like that in?
The cost?
Yeah, or how long a road is it?
Jesse. It would be a few, several hundred meters anyway.
I've got another motion that I would make then.
There's a motion on the floor at this time, Counselor.
So that's separate from this? In connection with this, though?
Separate from this motion. Jesse.
Through Madam Warden, the closest road connection's approximately half a kilometer away. So that's the gap between Beach Street and Elmwood currently. It's likely to be slightly more based on what the developer design would be.
C A O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a question to the mover, Debbie Warden. We can absolutely create a list of subdivisions that have more than 50 homes with one in and out. The second part of your motion is what concerns me the most, is what do you mean by explore possibilities of connectivity for a second exit for those? Because that could become a significant, that is a significant report, and it could have significant financial impacts on.
I guess, to answer that, C A O, it's just identifying lands that are either provincial or municipally owned that could be used. And the other subdivisions that are surrounded by private land ownership identify that the only way to get out of them is through private land ownership.
So through you, Madam Warden, are you intending that we bring back a report on just the availability of land, or what it would cost to get across said land? What kind of roads you would want built? How people would exit from one end or the other?
My motion is the first part, because before we get into building roads and looking at that, that would be a whole other motion to council, because we currently don't build roads. So I would just like to identify what the problem is and have all the facts on the table. And then from that report, I would see further action and further things going forward from there.
And through you, Madam Warden, do you want geotechnical done on each one of these properties that we would cross? I can't just say that there's land available. If there's land available and it's a swamp land, then that's not, so we would have to go out and investigate and do geotechnical to know if there was a possibility of using that land.
My understanding of a deputy warden's motion is just that he wants the land to be identified.
Yeah, the land identified, whether it's private ownership, or if it's provincial or public lands. That way there, the way forward for public lands is different than private ownership.
Anything else, C A O? Any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
The question's been called. And the motion has passed by a vote of nine to two, with Counselor McPhee and Counselor Hebb voting nay. Now Counselor Tingley, to this correspondence.
Through the chair, this might be wishful thinking, and maybe the staff would do this anyway, but could we go back to the developer and ask if they would move up that road under this circumstance?
Through you, Madam Warden, we could. And the way the DA is structured, although that is Phase Three, they can do phases concurrently, or we can approve an adjustment to those phases if it makes sense, and, you know, that road might. So we could certainly ask.
So would I need to make a motion to do that, or?
No, I don't think so. We can take that as a suggestion and go back.
That's it.
All right, anything else on this correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to, oh, sorry, Counselor Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. Item 15 and 18 talks about the 4H donation.
Well, we're doing correspondence for decision in the order that it's on here right now, Counselor. Thank you. Next item is a request from Counselor Andy Thompson, District 11, Municipality of Picto County, to adopt a resolution to establish a voluntary vulnerable persons registry to strengthen emergency response. C A O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This is a conversation that has been happening throughout Nova Scotia with certain municipalities. And the purpose of this resolution would be to gain support for the Public Safety Advisory Committee to prioritize putting in a vulnerable sector registry. Some of the suggestions have come that each municipality should do it on their own. What this resolution is trying to do is to get the province to provide Nova Scotia municipalities and local communities with a registry that would be one source of the truth. So you don't have different levels of registry and different levels of data collected by individual municipalities. So we have mutual aid in our fire departments. We have one source of the truth for a lot of things in Nova Scotia, and they're looking for the same thing with the registry. So the motion is at the bottom, would be that we, the municipality of East Hans, ask Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities, their Public Safety Advisory Committee, to prioritize the collaboration and partnership between municipal governments with possible support from the provincial government to ensure that the implementation of voluntary vulnerable persons registry province-wide that is integrated with the 911 system. So that is what the request is, and I would leave it to committee or council to discuss next steps.
My apologies, the system is lagging a little behind.
Through the chair, just listening to what this is about, I really don't need to have any further discussion. I'd be prepared to make the motion that we support this resolution.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor McPhee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion has passed unanimously. Next item is a request from the Halifax East Hans 4H Council. It's a donation request, and I believe it's in regards to trophies. We'll wait to have it open. Alana.
Thank you, through you, Madam Warden. This is a request through the Halifax East Hans 4H Council, similar to one that they put forward last year, where they were requesting a donation for trophies. And last year, through motion of council, we did support $100 that we gave to them for that. And there is $300 currently left in the GenGov miscellaneous grant fund.
Thank you. Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. My question earlier was to deal with number 15 and 18. 18 saying there are two clubs in this region, Schumail and Herbert Lands, but in 15, they're saying there are four clubs in East Hans. I'm just trying to find out whether discrepancies there.
I can answer that. Copickwood and Rodden are not in the Colchester East Hans region. They're in the, I forget the name of its, West Hans, Hans County, that region. 4H has different regions.
Okay. That clarifies that, thank you.
There are four clubs in the municipality, but two belong to one region and two to the other.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Hebb.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I make a motion that we give the Halifax East Hans 4H Council a donation of $100 towards their project.
Seconded.
Seconded by the deputy warden. Is there any, did you have anything to add, Alana?
Question.
Is there any discussion on the motion? The question has been called. And the motion has passed unanimously. Next is another 4H request, the Nova Scotia Pro Show request. So it is in front of you. Alana, are you taking this one as well?
Thank you, through you, Madam Warden. We have a second request from 4H Nova Scotia, the provincial body, for sponsorship to Pro Show. They do have various sponsorship packages there, ranging from $250 to $10,000. And this year, I believe Pro Show is being held at the, it's down in West Hans, I believe, exhibition grounds.
Now, just for those who are not familiar with 4H, Pro Show is provincial show. There used to be some consternation about calling it Pro Show, because some people felt that made people think it was a professional-type show, and it's not. It's to be provincial 4H show. So council, well, before I ask, what is your wish? Should we be interested in doing this? Would there be funding available, and where would it be at?
Through you, Madam Warden. We did just put forward the motion to provide $100 to the other 4H group, so there would be $200 remaining in the GenGov miscellaneous fund.
And that doesn't meet any of the, are there other grant pools with remaining money that we could? Okay, C A O.
Through you, Madam Warden. As is with the general government grants each year, you often do go slightly over your general government budget. The money would be found through other areas where expenses or revenues are better than budget. So it is not unusual for you to spend more than your general government grant budget for things that come in throughout the year. That would be a choice for council to make at this point, and we could facilitate that.
Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'll make a motion that we provide $200 to the 4H NS Pro Show sponsorship request, which is a balance of the budget.
That will not meet their ask. In order to have a sponsorship, it has to be 250.
This is up to 250.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry, I misread it. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Hebb. Counselor Eisner.
Could we not put it up to the $500 level? I mean, the cost of everything, gas for all these kids, got to do a lot of stuff. It is a big show. It costs a lot of money, and all of Nova Scotia goes to it. It's a very important show to the 4H group.
You could move an amendment to the motion to increase the amount to 500.
I would like to move an amendment. I'd like to get at least 500. We got to bring up the speed of some of this stuff. $100 won't fill up a car.
Do we have a seconder to the amendment? Seconded by Counselor Tingley. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Questions.
Question's been called on the amendment. One person left. Oh, okay. So the motion is passed by a vote of eight to two, with Counselor Hebb and Counselor Rhino voting nay. Now to the amended motion, which is to grant the provincial 4H show a sponsorship in the amount of $500.
Questions.
The question's been called. And the motion is passed by a vote of 10 to 1, with Counselor Rhino voting nay. Okay. Moving along, the next item. Sorry, folks, thank you. We will leave correspondence for decision and pick that up following the public hearing Counselors, this evening, we have two items on the public hearing agenda. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the public prior to making a decision on the proposals. To the members of the public who have chosen to participate this evening, welcome. Please note that council's procedural policy requires that you not cheer, boo, clap, or otherwise disrupt this hearing. Everyone that wishes will have an opportunity to be heard. Tonight, council may approve, reject, or defer its decision to a later date. Council approval is required for the proposals to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the public hearing advertisements were published.
Madam Warden, for the first item, a public hearing notice appeared in the July 11th, 2023, and July 19th, 2023 editions of the Chronicle Herald. The notices described council's intent to consider disposal of the surplus municipal property to Lighthouse Ministries, gave the date and time of the public hearing, and provided the location and estimated value of the property. For the second item tonight, a public hearing notice appeared in the July 12th and 19th, 2023 editions of the Chronicle Herald. The notices described the proposal, gave the date and time of the public hearing, and indicated that staff reports were available to the public.
Counselors, the first public hearing this evening is for a proposal to dispose of surplus municipal property situated at 2848 Highway 2, Shubenacadee, PID 45427218, Lot SH-1, to a nonprofit society, Lighthouse Ministries. I would now ask the Chair of the Corporate and Residential Services Committee to present his committee's report. This is a little awkward. It's normally planning that does this. Is that an error in the agenda? No?
This is corporate. But I see he doesn't have.
Adam? No.
Through you, Madam Warden. Through you, Madam Warden, tonight you do have two public hearings. The first one, and you're right, typically it is planning. The first one tonight is being presented by Corporate Services from a disposal of surplus property perspective, and the second one will be planning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Corporate Residential Service Committee has considered the disposal of surplus municipal property on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff's reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now like to ask staff to present their final report on the disposal of surplus municipal property.
Thank you very much. We're keeping you on your toes tonight, I guess. So through the chair, the former Shuby Hall, which is located at 2848 Highway 2, Shubenacadee, which we're calling the subject property this evening on the first public hearing agenda item, is our topic of discussion. And back in November of 2022, you'll recall that council directed staff to dispose of the subject property after we did a subdivision from the larger Shuby River Park parcel. And then in 2023, in camera, council further directed staff to call for expressions of interest, also known as EOIs, from community and nonprofit groups to purchase the subject property. And those submissions were brought back to council for consideration and further direction, were to be brought back for further consideration and direction. So in March 2023, we released that EOI, and it was open for submissions until April 25th. And in May, we were back in front of you, and you authorized the CEO to negotiate an agreement of purchase and sale with Lighthouse Ministries, who's also the current tenant of the property, pending a successful public hearing, which is what we're doing here tonight. And I will note that also in June, we met with Lighthouse Ministries to review their submission with them and walk through the process with them to make sure they were understanding of the disposal process that we have here at the municipality. So in terms of our powers to sell municipal property, that is governed by the Municipal Government Act, and it is further supported by council's disposal of surplus property policy. Section 51 of the MGA requires municipal council to hold a public hearing when we're selling property to a nonprofit organization for less than market value. I will note that Lighthouse Ministries is incorporated as a society under the Society's Act, which is a legal structure option for nonprofit organizations and falls under our MGA requirements. So in compliance with our MGA advertising requirements, as noted in the script there, our first advertisement was live on July 11th, and our second one was on July 19th. We also posted notice to easthans.ca and to our social media, and all of that was in compliance with our MGA requirements. So in terms of some details on the subject property, we're looking at 0.2 of an acre approximately. As we've discussed previously, the majority of this property is zoned high-risk floodplain, and therefore the building and its uses are considered non-conforming. The building use, it cannot change from its institutional use to another zone use, because if it does, it will discontinue, the institutional use zone will discontinue for a period of two years and cannot be recommenced. The building cannot be used for things like retail, restaurant, or other commercial uses. Surrounding the property, we have other high-risk floodplain zone and village core. And I will note, and this was illustrated on our advertisements as well, that the building value is approximately 116,200, but that is based off the 2023 assessment rule, because when we did the subdivision, we actually kind of hit them behind the schedule of the 2023 subdivision assessment rule. This survey on the screen here is a copy of the subdivision survey plan. The box that's highlighted in red is the property that will be transferred to Lighthouse Ministries pending the successful public hearing. And then the boxes that you can see in blue or darker shadow, those are the easements that we have registered against the property to ensure that we have proper municipal access into the parking lot behind, and also for our infrastructure services that we do have that run to a lift station behind. That was successfully registered in June as well. Here is a screenshot of what the building looks like. And in conclusion, we have been in compliance with our MGA and council policy requirements for the disposal of surplus property to a nonprofit organization. As mentioned, we had our notifications by way of newspaper, website notice, and social media. And our agreement of purchase and sale conditions, those will have our standard clauses of right of first refusal in favor of East Hans, meaning that if the Lighthouse Ministries is no longer in good standing, or if they are no longer using the property for community purposes, it will be transferred back to East Hans for $1, which is the value that we are transferring the property to them for pending this public hearing. On the screen is the recommendation that staff recommend that council approve the surplus disposal to Lighthouse Ministries, and the recommended motion, which reads, Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommend that council enter into an agreement of purchase and sale with Lighthouse Ministries for surplus municipal property situated at 2848 Highway 2, Shubenacadee, PID 45427218, Lot SH-1, for $1, and that the agreement of purchase and sale include standard clauses of right of first refusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, through you, the staff. You mentioned there that East Hans would have more or less a first right of refusal if it didn't continue to have community use. Is there a timeframe on that, or is that forever and ever, or is that for a block of time?
Thank you, through the chair. So that's registered against title, so it sticks with title forever and ever until it's decided to be released, which would be a mutual decision.
Thank you.
Counselor McPhee.
Thank you. Madam Warden, I'd like to move the recommended motion.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Musa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ah, sorry, we're in the middle of a public hearing, folks. Yeah, we cannot move, so if you would withdraw your motion till later, that would be wonderful. Yes, thank you, C A O. Yes, I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you are viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature, which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any comments and questions? First, does anyone attending in person have any comments and questions? Seeing none. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on YouTube livestream? No, nothing on the livestream. Does any member of staff have any final comments? I would now ask the Chair of the Corporate and Residential Services Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends that council enter into an agreement for purchase and sale with Lighthouse Ministries for surplus municipal property situated at 2848 Highway 2, Shubanakati, PID 45427218, Lot SH-1, for $1. The agreement of purchase and sale shall include standard clauses of right of first refusal. As Chair of Corporate and Residential Services, I so move.
Do we have a second or seconded by Counselor McPhee? Are there any final questions or comments from municipal councillors? We're still in the public hearing, councillor. Councillors, oh, okay. The question has been called. I'm not used to having two on the same sheet of paper. We'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Okay, returning to our agenda. Councillors, the second public hearing this evening is for a proposal to rezone six properties on Pine Hill Drive in Elmsdale to enable the development of semi-detached dwellings. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered their proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff report, completely evaluated, and made a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you. So this hearing this evening is for land use bylaw amendments to rezone six properties on Pine Hill Drive. So the properties currently are zoned, the established residential neighborhood are one zone, and they are designated the established residential neighborhood designation, and the properties total just over 6,000 square meters, and they are located within the South Corridor and Commercial Growth Management area. So the proposal is to change the zone from the established residential neighborhood R1 zone to the two-dwelling unit residential R2 zone in order to enable the development of semi-detached dwellings. So the applicant has also submitted a plan of subdivision in order to adjust the property boundaries of the lots in order to meet the R2 zone requirements as outlined in the land use bylaw, so the subdivision is still ongoing. So the minimum frontage for our two lots is 18 meters, so the site plan and subdivision plan that was submitted does meet those lot requirements. So this is the concept plan that was provided, and I did outline where the proposed buildings are going to be located, so there'll be 12 units in total. So staff have referred to the municipal planning strategy policies associated with the South Corridor and Commercial Growth Management area, the established residential neighborhood designation, as well as our general policies for amending the land use bylaw. So it's policy RD24 that allows council to consider rezoning from the R1 zone to the R2 zone, and policies IM17 through to IM25 outline the general criteria for amending the land use bylaw. And we did consult with Nova Scotia Public Works and Municipal Infrastructure and Operations, and there was no concerns regarding the road network or servicing capacity. And council's decision this evening is appealable to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. So there was an advertisement indicating that the proposal was under review that was placed in the Chronicle Herald in April, and there was no public information meeting held as this application does not involve any amendments to policy mapping. And we did send out letters and questionnaires to all residents within 300 meters of the subject property, so 110 questionnaires were sent out, and 11 were returned, some of the responses including whether fencing could be provided at the rear of the property. The land use bylaw has no fencing requirements in that zone, so it's not required that the applicant do that. Some concerns regarding increase in traffic along the road. Again, we did consult with Nova Scotia Public Works, and they didn't raise any concerns or request a traffic study. Some comments on how the R1 and R2 zones are similar, and therefore increase in density is favorable, and remaining comments were supporting the development. And for tonight's public hearing, there was again a letter mailed out to all residents within 300 meters indicating the date and time of this hearing, as well as a notice placed in the Chronicle Herald, and the municipal website and social media pages have been updated regularly. So staff have reviewed the proposed proposal to change the subject properties to the R2 zone, and the amendments have been evaluated using all of the policies in the municipal planning strategy, so staff did recommend the approval of the application. So in terms of timeline, you can see that we are at the public hearing stage this evening. That concludes my presentation, so thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to staff. My only concern with this is something that has come up since last week, and that was just, it's an area where there was really bad flooding, and putting in 12 more units, not necessarily the number, but, you know, adding to the infrastructure there. You know, it's just, I can't help but think of that when I look at this. I guess probably it's capable of handling 12 more units, but do you have any comments on that? Or is flooding in that area something that should be, like, you know, I know one of the councillors has said maybe there are areas that we need to look at that are prone to flooding, and maybe Pine Hill is one of them regardless of whether this goes through or not. So that's all my comments, thanks.
Staff have any comment on? John?
Yeah, go ahead, Jesse.
Okay. Jesse.
Through Madam Warden, so this particular area is actually the top of the hill. So this is the top of Pine Hill versus the bottom section, so these particular lots wouldn't be in a flood-prone area, and I, and from a certain, like, the team, the engineering review team would have looked at the technical servicing piece, not the flooding in this case, and they did not flag any issues or concerns.
Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden, as a follow-up to Counselor Garden Cole. Since we know water runs downhill, I'm assuming that the design of this layout would not impede water going down and causing more flooding at the bottom of Pine Hill? And as a follow-up, how would they drain that lot?
John?
Thank you, Madam Warden. So all these lots will have to follow the lock rating and drainage bylaw, so plans will be prepared for each of these lots, showing how they will drain. Having said that, they're not creating new roads, so they didn't, I don't believe they would have had to prepare a stormwater management plan, which you would, if you're creating a larger subdivision with new roads, but they do have to comply with the lock grading and drainage requirements.
Do you have any idea how that would drain if it doesn't go downhill?
Through you, Madam Warden, no, I mean, there will be a plan that will come in at the permit stage that they would have to present.
I know the lots, and I know the area, so I'm just curious, since the water's going to run downhill, there's a cross between two houses that goes that way, and then the rest of it goes right down to the bottom, so I have concerns that it's going to drain down and maybe impact the residents at the bottom, which we're having problems now. Those are my comments, thank you.
Deputy Ward.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to staff. Currently in the R1 zone, they could build a dwelling on each property as of right, and they would also be able to build a garden suite in the rear of each dwelling currently, correct?
Through you, Madam Warden, that's correct.
Thank you.
Does any councillor have any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I would now ask if the applicant has any comments or would like to make a presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Warden and all members of council. My name's Stephen Adams, and I represent Service of Developments, a company owned by Yusef and Ahmed Habush, and this evening both Abdul and Yusef have accompanied me. I'm here to request your support for second reading approval for our application on Pine Hill Drive to rezone these properties from R1 to R2. Leanne has covered this very thoroughly, I just want to touch on a couple of the high points. Your PAC agrees with this recommendation, as it complies with planning policies. Nova Scotia Public Works and Department of Infrastructure and Operations stated that there are no concerns. There are tax revenue increases, about $17,000 a year, $17,000 a year in perpetuity. I've seen literally hundreds of staff reports on different proposals, different development agreements, different rezonings. This is the first time I've ever seen a comparison before and after with regard to tax revenue. On a personal note, this process began February 8th, 2023. We're here this evening on July 26th. This took less than six months. That is very impressive compared to some other processes that had to be followed. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Does anyone, any councillor have any question for the developer? Counselor Mitchell.
So your plan is not to impact the residents at the bottom of Pine Hill Drive with drainage or water, water flow?
Yeah, as was explained earlier about your staff members, that we're not going to, you can't by law increase water flow to adjacent properties, that will be managed.
So you'll have a holding pit or something of some sort?
I'm sorry?
You'll have a holding pond of some sort to hold the water?
Well, we'll let our engineering consultant deal with that. That's what they do, so we'll have that, like I said, it won't increase your flows.
But you will be accessing the provincial ditching?
Whatever is required by the professional staff, yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Does any other councillor have a question? So I'll now open the floor for comments or questions from the public. If you are viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature, which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any questions or comments? You come to the mic and state your name and address, please, sir.
Certainly, Madam Warden. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name's Dave Hooper, I live at 76 Pine Hill Drive. I've spoken here before. I don't have an issue with the development at all. I mean, I know it's going to go ahead, and that's fine. I do have concerns about driveway length, the capacity to keep cars actually in their driveways instead of on the sides of the road. We already face crowding on one side of the road up there. There are no sidewalks, and there are two sharp turns, both one at the top and one at the bottom, and people are parking there, and if they park on both sides, I'm walking my dog in the middle of the road. There's a safety issue there. Recommend anyone who, you know, isn't aware of it, have a look. Sewer upgrades. There were proposed repairs that were actually approved here by council at one point in time that never took place, to my knowledge, in the actual lift station. Those leaks that allow groundwater, surface water, like we saw the other day, to go into the sewer. So right now, your municipality's warning system for that lift station having a problem is one of the residents in our neighborhood calling to say one of two things. Sewage isn't leaving their home, or sewage is entering their home. That's it, that's your canary in the coal mine, right? Because you have no remote monitoring of that system, and it's been degraded for ages. In fact, there's a family in the cul-de-sac who had back pressure so heavy that it blew out the top of their backflow valve and flooded their basement in this last storm. And they did what they could by installing a brand-new backflow valve, and it didn't help. So what I'm recommending is that you have another look at the sewage system capacity and resilience, at least by the time you've allowed this construction to move ahead.
Does staff, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I talk a lot. Counselor Garden Cole, you're absolutely correct about flooding. I've lived there 29 years next month. Granted, this was, you know, one of those once-in-however-many-year-type storms, but I've never seen flooding like that in that neighborhood. It was massive, and it went all the way up, all the way up the road to the crossover pipe square, and it was over the road, two feet deep in the road. And by the way, at that time, I saw a lot of runoff, silt, things like that coming down from the hill from the open land that's been left there in preparation for the development. So that's entering the ditches. All right. I know you've seen many proposals. I've seen many floods in our neighborhood, and everyone knows that developed land has less capacity to retain water or delay its flow. All right, so realize your engineers are going to have a look at it, but I ask that you have a really good look at it, please. That's all I have.
Does staff have any comment on any of the gentleman's question? John?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'll deal with the parking piece first, so there is a front yard setback, so any buildings would have to be five meters or 16 and a half feet back from the road right away. And as you know, there's quite often room from the edge of your property to the actual street, so the driveways will be at least 16.4 feet long and, you know, longer coming out to the street. So there should be, I think there should be adequate length for parking there. And in terms of the drainage, I don't know if Jesse has any comments.
Through Madam Warden. On the subdivision as a whole, I think that is a topic that council has talked in the past. There, I can talk to some of the work mentioned previously in a previous report of short-term mitigation measures. The proponent is correct, there were several items approved, some were taken, one was monitored and not taken, and I'll explain that. So the, there were eight stand pipes taken out to mitigate infiltration in the area, in the most prone area. There was also a review of flow into the lift station. the lift station itself. It was seeping in groundwater at, at that time. And staff had gone in and monitored it several times, and that, that had actually stopped. And so we were proceeding to monitor, and we had, had not had any issues again until, of course, last, last week, and so that, that does need to be re-looked at. I, I believe there will be discussions in the very near future on more detailed pieces of that, most of which probably won't be public to start because, you know, there's negotiations and legal matters involved in that. But that is a topic that is absolutely at the forefront of staff, and it will be discussed shortly.
Thank you. Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Ward. I had wanted to speak when I was just going to ask for clarification on what the gentleman was, was referring to. And Jesse just kind of explained that. So am I understanding correctly that, just to be sure for, for anyone who's listening, that we are going to take a look at this then? Like honestly with this, and I know this isn't quite what we're talking about, but I, I feel like we've got some. We are gonna take a look at, a good, long look at this in, in preparation for this development, should it go through?
Well, if I could, Jesse, I, I think it is certainly, as Jesse has indicated, it is on staff's work plan to review this area. Is that correct, Jesse? Sorry, folks, the mics are not cooperating tonight.
Through Madam Ward, correct. That is correct. It's, it's on the work plan, and it's already, the reviews have already begun.
Counselor Rhino.
Thank you. Through your staff. As of right, they could put single units on right there. Dwelling's in there right now. So you, you've technically, by, if it's, this motion goes through, you've doubled the capacity on both the sewer system and, and I guess my second thing is, I heard there's open ditches here. So, okay, and I heard that they're on, on the top of a hill. So I guess which way would that water system flow? Would it flow, flow back down toward Pine Hill where it would, or would it go toward the other way?
Just before I go to staff, counselor, you are correct in saying that one unit as of right, but in actual fact, in that zone, you are allowed a second unit on each one of those lots as a garden suite or an in-law suite. So technically, you are already allowed two units on each of those lots. Jesse or John, did you want to answer the other question? Try and, yeah, turn this one off.
Through you, Madam Ward. So the answer is, it depends. Being at the top of the hill and the slope, so water can be directed to the back of the properties, to one side, to the other, it depends on how the proponent designs their properties. And so we won't know until they have a more detailed design and, and, and look at it at that time. They're required to not do additional harm to their neighbors. That's, that's part of any new build. And so their designers are, are liable to do that when they, when they design. So that'll be the view that we take. But as I mentioned, it's, it's not a, not all properties, like it could, it's at the top of the hill, but it could go to the other side. It could go, it just depends. Half of it could go one way, the other could go off the back of the lots, ever. I, it just depends on the lay of the land, and I don't have the topography right in front of me, other than I know that it is definitely not low-lying.
No, I don't know. I don't know. Is a little bit concerning, because then.
But counselor, we've already been told that the engineers for the proponent are going to design that.
But you're asking us to make a decision before we have this.
That is completely the way we do it every time.
I'm just trying to point out, how can you make a stuff, a decision if you're not sure where that water's going? Because if it's directing to back down toward Pine Hill at the lower end, then you could possibly be increasing the flooding risk down there. So I think I got a little concerned around that.
But the developer is legally required to have a plan, and legally required to, for that plan to not impact the houses below. And that is a situation in every development that we approve in these situations, that there are engineers who design these and, you know, should. It is, it's difficult, but I mean, those engineers and the proponent are liable if it doesn't work the way they say it's going to work, and that's.
I guess one thing to be liable, like I mean, but we're not the people that's living there. And, you know, that's a broad statement, you know, they're not supposed to increase, increase flow at the bottom. It's a legal requirement or whatever, and which is probably hard to prove at some point, so I have concerns about this.
Counselor Tingley.
Through the chair to staff, just listening to this, it doesn't sound like this development, whether it's single dwellings or duplexes, is gonna change materially the impact on, down the hill. But they do definitely have a problem in that area. I'm thinking that after this, like the municipality, the province, the federal government, everybody's gotta get their head out of the sand and, and figure some of this stuff out, so people don't have these problems. Again, my understanding, just listening to this, it doesn't sound like this development is gonna impact anything in a big, big way, but I, I think the municipality and the province and the federal government have to get together and figure out some of these flooding problems. In fact, the solutions are known, but nobody seems to be acting on it. I would like your comments on that.
Well, we are discussing this application. I really, I. Jesse, do you have a response? I think it's difficult to separate this application from the larger scope of flooding and, and issues, and we already know that it is on staff's agenda to be. They've already started working on reports about this. I don't know if Jesse can add any more than that at this time.
Through, through Madam Ward, I, I can, it's an opportunity to just talk roles and current, and current mandate. And so from a municipal level, we, we manage really the, the flows within road right-of-ways. That, that is our, and in municipal road right-of-ways. And so jurisdictionally, we, we keep that lens. Water table and flow is so more vast than just that, and it's so much more complex. So we, we own less than twenty-one kilometer, or less than twenty-five kilometers of roads. That's growing quickly. But there's over six hundred kilometers of roads. Well, there's a whole lot more water on the rest of the roads than just municipal, and the roads only make up a small portion of the landmass and all the water traveling around it. So it's a massive topic. That, that said, is we do have a part to play as a municipal unit. The province has some stake in that in today's world, in, in. There is provincial funding available to help support projects where applicable. It's called the FRET program, the flood risk, and I can't remember the acronym fully off the top of my head. But that's one thing. It's an annual program. The Truro that saw extensive flooding historically received a lot of FRET funding, and it, and it entailed all the berm work, and they, they're still digging up that area now. The, just, I drove by two weeks ago, and they're still digging. So that's been non-stop. At a federal level, there's also flood risk mitigation funding and programming, so you, with any of these, you have to, to apply, you have to do, conduct a study. You can get support federally for studies to seek out mitigation areas for flooding. If you get a job, if you get something that is concrete that you can put, put shovels in the ground to do, then you also need to be able to quantify it, design it, build it. From a municipal stance, the Municipal Government Act limits municipalities as we can only spend, we can't spend money on private property. So that is a limiting factor for us. And jurisdictionally, we don't spend money on a provincial property unless we have an approval, like a sidewalk. We get an approval to put a structure within a road right-of-way. So it's, it's a complex layer of approvals, and it doesn't mean we can't, we shouldn't tackle the topic. It's just, it's just hard. And there's a lot of layers to it, and in today's world, the municipality doesn't have a stormwater department. We don't have stormwater operations. And to go that route, we need to figure out a thoughtful and strategic way to build up that portfolio. And it's gonna cost some dollars at some point. And I, I can't go into more depth than that, but it's something that's a bigger conversation than what we can have tonight. But we should have that conversation in more detail in the future.
Thank you, Jesse. Counselor Tingley.
I guess that answers part of my question, but to me, you know, it's, and I don't, I don't think the municipality is at fault for all this. It's just a problem.
Madam Ward, point of order. We are talking about a development agreement here, and it has already been established by staff that any, at the permitting stage, they are required legally to provide a drainage plan for the water. If any other members of council wish to bring up things regarding flooding and stuff like that, this is not the place for it.
Thank you, Deputy Ward. And I would tend to agree with that. Plus, counselors, I do have a list of counselors wishing to speak, and we are within the part of the public hearing for the public to ask questions and speak at this time. There was a time for counselors to ask questions and speak. That has passed. There will be another opportunity for counselors to have questions or comments after the motion is made, if they so wish. So does any other member of the public have any comments or questions?
I'm Nancy McTernan, 1431 Enfield Road. I, I don't know anything about these guys. I'm fine with it. I don't know why counselors are talking about flood problems. These, it's not their fault. There's, these are problems that you guys have never addressed. And I'm talking about where I am, my business in Elmstead.
I'm sorry, but this, this is a hearing for this specific.
Well, I thought we were talking, you guys were talking about.
No, we are talking about this specific development.
Seventeen thousand in extra taxes, tax revenue?
That's, first, but I have heard that figure, but I have no reason to doubt it.
For a year? Twelve properties? And my house is over five thousand dollars a year?
I, I think the point of the, of the proponent was that it would be an increase over what would be if it was developed as of right. That would be an increase.
That's what I was asking. I'm just trying to find out.
It's not the total amount. It's just the amount more.
More above what?
Above if they developed the property as of right.
So how much is the total taxes?
I would have no idea. The homes have not been built. I, I, I don't have an answer for that.
Maybe somebody else does.
PVAC, the provincial, does the, does the assessments. We wouldn't have that.
PVSC does the assessments, so until such time as we receive the roll, we would not have that information.
I think it's a great idea. That's all. You'll hear them.
Okay, seeing no one else from the public present wishing to speak. Are there any questions on the livestream? And I see that there are not. Does any member of staff have any final comments? I would now ask the chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading and approve the application to rezone properties identified as Pids 45416989, PID 45421419, PID 45421401, and PID 45421393, located on Pine Hill Drive, from the established residential neighborhood R1, R1 zone to a two-dwelling unit residential, R2 zone, and council's decision being contingent on final subdivision approval being granted. As chair of PAC, I so move.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Musa. Are there any final questions or comments from municipal counselors? Counselor Eisner.
Yeah, I just have a question. When you're increasing the population up there, increasing the traffic flow and all that stuff, will they be doing sidewalks?
Jesse.
I got it. Through, through Madam Ward. So in this section, no. But I would however, flag the road connectivity and the pedestrian connectivity. So the, there's another development down being proposed at the other end that was referred to earlier this evening. It was the FH Developments, and in context with connecting to Elmwood Subdivision. Well, that development, which is just down the street from this proposed rezoning, has proposed, extensive proposed active transportation routing all the way through it, along with sidewalks, and so it will not be necessarily public connectivity right in front of those dwellings, but there will be just down the road in the not-so-distant future. So it, I wanted to make sure that that was mentioned, because it's relevant to this location.
What could that distance be?
A hundred meters, tops.
So it's, it's a big improvement then?
Are there any final questions or comments from any other counselors? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? And the motion is passed by a vote of nine to two, both Counselor Rhino and Counselor Mitchell voting nay. That concludes tonight's public hearings, and I would like to thank everyone for attending. So we'll now return to our regular agenda and continue with correspondence for decision. Okay, so per council motion, C23161, staff contacted Cheryl Kopich-Giho, Indigenous Community Engagement Officer for HR and and Sabagin Agate Councilor Member, Council Member, regarding a blanket exercise. Ms. Kopich-Giho is available on Thursday, September the 28th, which is council extension night, and she will check for October dates as a backup. I don't know if this is really, we've already moved this. Is there a decision required here? Deputy Ward.
I would move that we book Ms. Cheryl Kopich-Giho, sorry for missing the name, for Thursday, September 28th, the council extension night, for council and staff to take part in a blanket ceremony or blanket exercise.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Hibbs. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. Next item, we have a letter from Harold McNeil regarding aquatics program registration and the East Hans multipurpose curling facility. and the East Hans multipurpose curling facility.
CAO? Thank you, Madam Warden. Shirley will bring it up on screen here. We do have a letter from Mr. McNeil. There's a lot of information in the letter, and not all of it, I would say, is accurate with respect to the numbers and information in the letter, so I guess I would look for council to ask what you want us to do with the letter. He does request that council answer the questions with respect that are throughout the letter, and that it is not staff who answer them. I'm not sure, there are answers to a lot of them, they're, we would have to go through and fact-check and make sure that council knew what was information that was from an accurate source and what was not. I would say most of the information that he's looking for is available in our annual reports and budgets. So I guess I really do look for direction to respond to Mr. McNeil and how you'd like that to flow through council or committee.
Counsel, what is your wish? Counselor Tingley?
Through the Chair, I'd make a motion that the CAO respond to the letter and direct him to the information in the reports and budgets, and provide any other information you can. I can't see council being able to take the time to, or to do an investigation, report to the level of detail that he's asking here. I totally understand his frustration and the amount of work he's doing trying to get a curling rink, but, yeah, I just recommend that the CAO respond in that matter.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Eisner. CAO?
Through Madam Warden, some of these are going to be difficult for me to answer, and as it would be difficult for this council to answer, because a lot of these decisions were done back in prior councils. So the why, you know, why was the recommendation for support not supported by past councils? You know, there is a motion that says they don't support it. There was a staff report at the time, I think Mr. McNeil was probably present for that or heard about it afterwards. You know, why was the Planning and Management Services report not utilized with respect to the Curling Association? Again, a past decision of a past council. At the time, the Curling folks were certainly part of, responded to with those decisions. They've been here presenting to council, looking for additional funds. They heard the discussion of council at the time. I don't have recordings of those meetings to go back and say why each one of these decisions was or wasn't made, nor do I think this council does, so, you know, a lot of the questions simply aren't answerable. They're, so I guess I can call Mr. McNeil, or, you know, I can send him a letter, or respond to say that, but I can't speak for prior councils, and I... Well, I can respond to him, I'm just saying I can't answer a lot of the questions that are in his letter, nor can council. So if that's the answer we can give him, then I can certainly do that.
No, it was, so, through the Chair, I will amend that motion, then, that you call him or write him whatever you see fit, and just advise him that this was decisions based on previous council, and, you know, it's just not possible for us to investigate what was on their minds and everything that went into those decisions. All we know is the reports and budgets that are available, which would be available to him, and that's where we stand at this time.
Does a seconder agree? To the motion, Deputy Ward?
Yeah, I was just gonna, until it was amended, I wasn't going to support the motion, because I didn't believe it was fair for the CAO have to answer those questions. Some of the reports, if you go back and look through the history, some people were here for them. Some of the ask was to take the entire reserves, from every reserve within the municipality to build the curling rink for them, and some of the, just the requests just didn't make financial sense at all. So I'm happy with the CAO just returning and saying these were decisions a council made, and as far as the complaint about non-residents, it's been clearly established here at council on many occasions that multiple residents throughout the municipality use other facilities as well, and by restricting it to residents only, you are disenfranchising and hurting many other residents in the municipality who have to access services other places that also currently pay for the aquatic center here. So that's all I can say about that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Question's been called. The motion is passed unanimously. I believe that concluded correspondence for decision. So next on our agenda is the ratification of the CAO's contract. Who takes that? Me? I can't move the motion as I'm in the chair. So, yeah, I will turn the chair over to Deputy Warden.
Go ahead, Warden.
Counsel met in camera on June 20th, 2023, to review the CAO's employment contract. From that meeting, the Warden was directed to sign a contract amendment effective July 1st, 2023. The following motion will ratify the contract decision per those discussions. I move that council ratify changes to the municipality's employment contract with the CAO effective July 1st, 2023, as discussed during the in-camera session on June 20th, 2023. I so move.
Moved by the Warden, seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Counselor Rhino, for discussion.
Thank you. I guess my question is, will that contract be made public?
Go ahead, Warden.
Similar to other levels of government and many other businesses, in the annual report each year, the CAO's salary is made public.
But not other aspects of the contract, correct?
I'm not aware that other entities publicize their contract negotiations, but no, under council's current policy, the CAO's salary is certainly public, but negotiations leading up to that would not be.
Well, I guess I have a concern with that, because this is taxpayers' money that are paying the salaries in this municipality, and I think everything that is within paying these individuals should become open to the public.
Is that all, Counselor?
Thank you.
Seeing no one left to speak?
Questions?
Question on the motion, we'll go to the vote. And the motion has passed ten to one, with Counselor Rhino voting nay. Back to you, Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Next on the agenda is second reading for bylaw P-1300, the blasting bylaw. And Counselor Mitchell, over to you.
Second reading bylaw P-1300, blasting bylaw. At the January meeting of council, staff were directed to bring back a report and drop blasting bylaw for East Hans. The Planning Advisory Committee reviewed the report and draft bylaw during the executive committee meeting held on June 20th, 2023, and council gave first reading on June 28th, 2023. Feedback received on the draft bylaw was shared with council and attached to this agenda. Council may proceed with second and final reading. I move that council give second reading to bylaw P-1300, blasting bylaw. I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Green, is there any discussion on the motion?
Questions?
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. So that brings us to committee reports. So we'll go to Corporate and Residential Services, Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on 18 July, 2023, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. Sustainable Services Growth Fund, allocation of funds. Miss Paladiv East Hans received a letter from the Nova Scotia Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing dated March 31st, 2023, indicating the province of Nova Scotia approved a grant of one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars to support infrastructure investments under the new Sustainable Service Growth Fund. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council, the council approved the use of the allocation of the one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight Sustainable Growth Fund toward the following projects. Industrial Park Lift Station, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Waste Management Loader, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Waste Management Center Household Waste Receiving Expansion, fifteen thousand dollars. Lance Secondary Planning Strategy, one hundred and thirty thousand. Waste Management Center Green Bin Storage Structure, eleven thousand. Shuban Akadi Parking Capacity Project, fifty thousand. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Habb, is there any discussion on the motion?
Questions?
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Housing Acceleration Fund. The Housing Acceleration Fund provides incentive funding to local governments to encourage local initiatives that remove barriers to housing supply, accelerate the growth of supply, and support the development of complete low-carbon, climate-resistant communities which are affordable, inclusive, equitable, and diverse. Staff presented a draft application to the committee, and the committee approved the motion below. However, staff has since received feedback from the Housing Accelerator Fund Navigator at the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities on our draft application. It was indicated the application would not score well based on the initiatives included. As a result, staff has amended the application to include initiatives that more closely follow the funding guidelines. As a result, staff are recommending that the amended application be approved using the suggestion motion below. Original motion approved at CRS. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends to council, the council directs the CAO to submit a Housing Accelerator Fund action plan that includes initiatives as generally outlined in Appendix C of this report, along with additional requirements, required documentation to the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation as Miss Paladiv's application under the Housing Accelerator Fund program, and authorize the CAO to enter into a contribution agreement or amending agreements that may be required should East Hans be approved for funding under the program. Suggestion motion. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends to council, the council directs the CAO to submit a Housing Accelerator Fund action plan that includes the initiatives as generally outlined in the Halifax, sorry, not Halifax, the Housing Accelerator Fund supplemental report posted with the council agenda, along with all additional required documentation to the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation as Miss Paladiv's application under the Housing Accelerator Fund program, and authorize the CAO to enter into any contributing agreement or amending agreements that may be required should East Hans be approved for funding under the program. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
2022-2023 Annual Report, including Treasury Report and Consolidated Financial Statements. The CAO presented the 2022-2023 Annual Report and Treasury Report. Committee had all other questions answered by staff. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends to council, the council accept the 2022-2023 Annual Report, including the Treasury Report and Consolidated Financial Statements, and put it on file. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Musa, is there any discussion to the motion? The question has been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Construction Issues, Highway 2 Enfield. Counselor Garden Cole brought forward concerns from community residents regarding the road construction on the provincial Highway 2 in Enfield. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommends to council, the council directs staff to contact the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works regarding the status of the construction of Highway 2 in Enfield. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
We have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Musa. Counselor Garden Cole?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to comment on this. When speaking with a supervisor from Public Works last week, they got a timeline from the developer and the projects manager, and they did follow that timeline, they finished up, and actually, today, when I came to the meeting, it was paved, so they're all done with the road construction. I just wanted to give an update on that. That should be the end of the interruption of traffic.
Thank you.
In that spot, thanks.
So, Madam Warden, through you, would this motion still be required?
Would this motion now be redundant, council, or should we send this through? The CAO tells me she feels it's redundant. Counselor Garden Cole?
I was just going to add that I'm assuming that it already, the reaching out already took place, and, yeah, and the item has been taken care of, so.
So, does mover and seconder agree to withdrawing the motion?
As Chair of the committee, I will withdraw the motion.
Seconder agree? Counselor Habb, sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay, Madam Warden. My only concern is, did Department of Public Works actually go and check the job that is done completely, since it has been done? That would be my only concern. So, to me, I think it should go on, be forced to make sure that the Department of Transportation has actually looked at it and made sure it's done and done properly.
The CAO has informed me that they can just simply do that as a matter of course, do that follow-up.
Seeing that that one's done, I will go back to the final motion.
Contractual Issue, Road Gap Project 2. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommended council, the council approved an additional seventy-two thousand dollars to project 22023, Road Gap Project 2, to be funded from the contingency reserve, and to approve allocation of four-two-thousand-eighty-five to the Rural Fire Capital Fund from the contingency reserve, and also allocate the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two to the Mount Uniaque Recreation Fund from the contingency reserve. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Musa, is there any discussion on the motion? Question has been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
As Chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary motion is carried. We will now go to the Planning Advisory Committee's report. Counselor Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to note, my laptop has died, so I'll be reading from the screen when I need to. The committee held its regular meeting on July 18th, 2023, in council chamber. The following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. Presentation from Dean Shea, Development Agreement Fencing Requirement. Council previously tabled motion, C23, Bracket 156, the council do not give initial consideration to substantially amending an existing development agreement with 3313013, Nova Scotia Limited, to allow Mr. Shea an opportunity to make a presentation on the fencing at his development that did not meet the requirements of his development agreement. Developer Dean Shea made a presentation at the July Planning Advisory Committee meeting. As a result of that presentation and discussion, the Planning Advisory Committee made another motion. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council that council... The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council, that council authorize staff to correspond with Mr. Shea and request that he provide staff with the details of the modification to the existing fence to ensure that it meets the intent of the original fencing requirement, and that staff bring those modification details to council for final approval. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Heb. I believe there's an update on the modification plans?
An update on the modification plans are now available, and the floor is turned over to the Director of Planning and Development for the update.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I don't know if we can bring up the document that Mr. Shea submitted. So if we can scroll down to the next photo. So this is...
I'm just going to interrupt you, John. I'm a little confused with procedure here, all the way, but the motion reads, I guess we could approve that motion saying he had to do this, and then you could give your report. My apologies. So, you've heard the motion, it's been seconded. So any question has been called?
Okay, we'll see what you say. That's done.
I only have eight people who have voted. Councillor Green was out of the room, so I still need two more. Now Wayne was out of the room. So I still have, now I have nine people who have voted. I still need one more person to vote.
It's me.
And the motion has passed with a vote of nine to one. Councillor Rhino voting nay. Now I will turn the mic back over to the Director of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So this is his mock-up, I guess, showing a sheet of four-by-eight trellis against the fence with some frame around it, and that's what he's proposing to put along the entire fence facing the adjoining property. When we looked at that, it's our opinion, based on the development agreement, that would actually comply with the development agreement. So he would no longer need to amend the DA if he does that. It would be, in our opinion, an opaque wooden fence, which is what the DA calls for, and the property owner, adjoining property owner, seems satisfied with that. So really, I think at this point, if council's satisfied with that, we don't need to take any further action. He doesn't need to bring his report any further forward for a public hearing. We'll just enforce the DA with the understanding that this is what he's going to put up.
Well, thank you. That was a speedy resolution, I must say. Does any member of council have any comments? So we do have a motion that was tabled. We can leave that motion on the table forever. I would suggest, for tidiness, you know, for the sake of closure or tidiness, we could lift that motion from the floor and defeat it, based on the information we have had from staff. But that's the recommendation. If someone wishes to move to lift that motion from the table. Moved by councillor Eisner. Seconded by councillor Heb. So the motion is lifted from the table, that we not give initial consideration to substantially amending an existing development agreement. That motion is now redundant, as there is no longer a need to amend the development agreement. So in order to remove that motion, we should probably vote on it, and the recommendation, I know it seems awkward, but would be to defeat the motion, to clean it up off the books.
Question.
Question's been called. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Musa. I have to go back to the microphones. Councillor Musa. Nope, sorry. Some nights I can have four mics. Tonight I can only have three. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to John. John, from now on, any development in that zone, are you going to talk, tell developer that this is okay to do, or instead of a full wood fence?
Through you, Madam Warden, yes. I guess, in our opinion, that is a wooden fence. It just happens to be attached to a chain link fence. So it meets the test of the bylaw. If somebody wants to build two fences, they'll be able to do that.
So if this is more desirable for our other developers, it's okay? I want to get, thank you.
Councillor Heb.
Just for clarification, Warden, a yes vote means we support the motion, and a no vote means we defeat it?
We would be voting nay to defeat the motion and remove it from the books.
Great, thank you.
Far be it from me to tell you how to vote, but if we're simply voting to clean this motion off the vote, it's a nay vote. Any further questions? Question's been called. Someone has not voted. And the vote is in, the motion is defeated by a vote of ten to one, with councillor Rhino voting in favor. Okay. Back to you, councillor Mitchell.
PLN twenty-three dash zero-zero-eight, The Tireman, Redesignation Rezoning Initial Report. The municipality has received an application from the Tireman to redesignate and rezone a portion of property and mountain unit from your rural-use RU zone and designate to the regional commercial RSE zone and designation. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council, the council authorize staff to schedule a public information meeting to consider proposal for a portion of PID four-five-three-three-seven-seven-two-two to change the designation from rural-use RU to regional commercial RSE, and the zone from rural-use RU to regional commercial RSE. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by the deputy warden, councillor Musa.
No.
No? Councillor Heb.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I was just inquiring, is that meeting going to be held here at the chambers, or would that be in Mount Uniac?
Through you, Madam Warden. Per your policy, it will be held in Mount Uniac.
Any further discussion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. Back to you, councillor Mitchell.
PLN twenty-three dash zero-zero-two, Zara Vista Development Limited Rezoning Final Report was dealt with at the public hearing. Plan Update Final Report. Staff have prepared the final report for the plan update and prepared the final draft for the twenty twenty-three Easthants Official Community Plan Municipal Planning Strategy, Land Use Bylaw and Subdivision Bylaw for Planning Advisory Committee's Review and Recommendation for Second and Final Reading. First reading of the twenty twenty-three Easthants Official Community Plan was given on May twenty twenty-three council meeting. A motion for second reading and approval will be dealt with at tomorrow's night public hearing. As Chair of the Committee, I'm with the adoption of this report.
Seconded by councillor Green. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Keith, did you wish to speak prior to voting on that? I'm sorry. I will declare that the motion has passed, but I'll allow you some leeway.
I guess there's no mention of the motion that councillor Green made, and I seconded with regard to what removal of parts of that zoning from, that was a recommendation to council, I would assume, so.
Tomorrow night is an extension of council, and that will be encompassed in the report at the public hearing tomorrow.
It's in the script tomorrow.
But shouldn't this be part of a mention of this within the committee report?
No, because this issue is being dealt with at council tomorrow night. It's just simply mentioned here to let people know it's being dealt with tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes PAC. Next, we have Parks, Recreation and Culture, and over to you, councillor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Committee held its regular meeting July eighteen, twenty twenty-three in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. Number one, familiarization of tour dates. Based on discussion with the CIO, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department created itineraries for familiarization tours of Easthants. Purpose of these tours would be to provide council and senior leadership with an opportunity to visit a wide variety of municipal assets as a group, including tours interpretation of specific dates. From that discussion, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee recommends that council direct staff to budget funds for a tour to occur for the new council after the October twenty twenty-four municipal election. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
The question has been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee also recommends that council direct staff to create a virtual familiarization tour to address the municipal sites in the municipality, including the Rodden RCMP detachment. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called? No? Oh, sorry. Councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Warden. I really question the value of making this video, a virtual tour of the, it's going to take a lot of time for staff, and I just wonder if it's really time and money well-spent doing this. I know myself, the familiarization tour in person, I would get a lot more out of it than this virtual tour, so I'm not a, I think it's a good idea that we should visit, but I just don't know if it's a good expenditure of the staff's time. I would think even an informal one without, you know, getting movie crews in or anything, still going to take a lot of time and effort. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Councillor Gardencole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So when we talked about doing that video, was that before we decided to have kind of less formal tours, if you will, that councillors could sign up for, or was it anyway, besides that? It was anyway? Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. And the motion is passed by a vote of seven to four, with councillor McPhee, councillor Heb, councillor Musa, and councillor Eisner voting nay. Back to you, councillor Rhino.
Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee also recommends that council authorize staff to send an email to council to coordinate site visits and a tour of the municipality and its facilities. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by councillor Heb. Any discussion? Question's been called. Somebody needs, the motion is passed unanimously. Back to you, councillor Rhino.
Thank you. Item number two, Easthants Sportsplex Request to Increase Rates Financial Variances. Following a request by the Easthants Arena Association to raise field and ice rental rates, in a subsequent presentation by the Easthants Sportsplex General Manager, council directed the general manager by motion C. twenty-three-two-twenty to provide financial staff with two thousand and eighteen financial statements and budget to compare to the current year for the purpose of bringing a staff report in July. So from that, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee recommends that council approve a four percent rate increase on ice rentals, a three percent on field rentals, and instruct the CIO to again communicate articles eight-point-three and eight-point-four of the July twenty-twenty-one Facilities Management Agreement to the Easthants Arena Association Board Members and General Manager. This communication is to emphasize the need to soon prepare a forecast of revenue and expenditures for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and to take the appropriate steps to increase revenues and/or decrease expenditures should a deficit be forecast. As well, it should be emphasized that any surplus in a fiscal year is to be forwarded to the Easthants to include with the Easthants Sportsplex Capital Repairs Reserve. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion? The question's been called. And the motion has passed unanimously.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. Next, we will go to the Audit Committee Report. Over to you, Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Warden. The committee held its meeting on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The following motions are coming forward as a result of the meeting. Financial statements for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and municipal auditor twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The committee received a presentation from Paul Jane, CPA/CA, and Danielle Guessen, CPA, from Deloitte summarizing what was audited in the fiscal year, which included the consolidated financial statements, the LE, MC, recoverable expenses, and the water utility statements for the UARB. Presentation of the twenty twenty-three audit results was also included. The Audit Committee recommends to council, the council adopt the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three financial statements as presented by Deloitte at the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three Audit Committee Meeting, and that Deloitte LLP be appointed as municipal auditor for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Green. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question has been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Membership appointment for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, or sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. As per section forty-four of the MGA, the Audit Committee recommends to council, the council appoints the membership of the Audit Committee for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four be comprised of the warden, chair of Corporate and Residential Services, two additional councillors, and one public member. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Green. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded by councillor Heb. All those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. We now will, we have a contractual issue to be discussed, which requires us to move in camera. That issue will be brought by Jesse Holsman. So we will take a two-minute break while we have the public and any other persons who are required to leave before we move in camera. I would entertain a motion to go in camera. Moved by councillor Heb. Seconded by councillor Green. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried.
If you would prefer, we could do business from counselors after the public hearing tomorrow night. Someone would make a motion to that effect when we come out of camera. That would be appropriate. Okay, folks, we are -- we'll call our meeting back to order. I would report that we met in camera to discuss a contractual issue. Staff were given instruction in that session. There are no motions coming forward from that, uh, from that session. Uh, this meeting does continue tomorrow night with the public hearing for the, uh, plan review. Uh, we do have, uh, the warden's report and business from counselors left as well. What is your wish, counselors? Counselor Tingley.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, handle that tomorrow night.
We have a seconder. So it's been moved and seconded that those items on the agenda, the warden's report and business from counselors be carried over until tomorrow evening after the public hearing. Yes. And the meeting tomorrow night starts at seven. Here, yes. It's a continuation of council. I do see that we have the time and date, but we will also set the time and date of the next council meetings following the business from counselors and the warden's report. That's acceptable to everyone. So all those in favor of moving that to tomorrow night? Contrary, motion is carried. So I would be looking for a motion to adjourn to reconvene tomorrow evening at the hour of seven. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. We'll see you tomorrow evening at seven, folks.